We're going to go ahead and get started with the Lander County Commission meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain, and Austin Board of County Highway Commissions, April 23rd, 2020, via also via conference by go-to-the-meeting. Okay, so when we before I get any farther, we're going to make sure that people understand for the rustling of papers, to be careful with that, please, because it magnifies times 10 on this end. So, all right, so we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. So Art, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and have a moment of silence. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. So Lander County Commission may break for lunch from 12 to 1:15. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be considered for may be combined for consideration by the public body. Any items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioner reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars. So go ahead. Patty, do you have any?
Thank you. There's been so many meetings statewide and federally that I think we all have been attending by phone, so I won't go into all of those, but those are pretty much daily. But we did have a meeting yesterday, the Executive Board of NACO met, and I did want to pass that on to you because they've been very concerned that they have not getting any kind of response or communication from the governor at all. And Marilyn Kirkpatrick, who of course used to be in our legislature and now is with the Commission in Clark County, was very forward in what Clark County is doing. They have just taken it upon themselves that they were going to be planned to reopen. And that was pretty much a consensus of the different groups that were there, that they thought each county should just have their own plan and go forward with what we need to do. Now Clark County actually set up a lab.
This conference will now be recorded.
It was over $100,000 that it cost them to set up a lab, that does the rapid four-hour testing. And they are making their own swabs. And she said that they are starting actually tomorrow, and they will be testing 1,700 people a day. And then on May 15th, they will move that up to 4,500 a day. And then by June 1st, they will be at 10,000 a day. And the whole plan is they're following the CDC criteria and the federal benchmark and such, but they have three and a half million people, so they really have to be careful on what's going on. But the testing will start at assisted living and the long-term care and their employees. So the different counties have taken a look at that and said, yes, we do need some help. We need some plans. And that's where it's all going on how we can do this. And I know that I've spoken with our executive director, and we're having another meeting with all of our emergency personnel and such for the counties at 1 o'clock this afternoon. Thank you.
Patty, excuse me.
Yes.
This is Judy.
Yes.
Is that testing? Hold on. Can they test to determine whether or not, will that include testing on whether or not you have had it and are immune to it?
The testing kits actually just determine whether you do have it or not. And that's the problem with testing. You can test today and not have it, and you can test on Monday and you might have it. But we still have to follow the guidelines. We can't open a county with no testing at all because we truly don't know who has and who doesn't. So that's what we have to start with. I also might add one other thing, that they are statewide going to do a PSA on what all the different counties are doing at this point. So we're getting that information together, too. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
The only thing that I have to report is that I found an article by the New York Times, and the New York Times is monitoring Lander County again for some reason.
All right, Judy, do you have anything?
I don't, Kathy.
Brian?
Nothing to report, Kathy.
All right, very good. The only meeting that I have attended has been the hospital board meeting. And other than regular standard stuff, of course, they're talking about the testing, and that we have one ghost and then one resident. And that is still the last I was aware of. So beyond that, I don't have anything. So we want to go ahead on to staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and start. Brandy Mangoa and I, our county health nurse, we have daily meetings, sometimes multiple meetings daily on the phone to discuss things. And to date, Lander County remains at two positives, the ghost, as you said, and then a second one, with no new cases. They've tested 77 individuals for Lander County. But like I said, no new cases at this point. One of the things that we like to reiterate is the social distancing, the hand hygiene, using the recommendation of using face masks in public. And I want to assure the board through multiple discussions, through looking at other plans, the mind, what their minds are doing and stuff, Brandy and I have a plan. If it is decided that we are going to open the county, we have a plan to make that happen. There are individuals within the county, business owners I've been contacted by and heard about that are willing are very ready to open. They want to move forward. We need to get our economy back. And as Commissioner Wade said, we get nothing from the governor. I watched his news conference the other night. It was a lot of talk, and that was it. So we have something in place. When we get the word, we will be ready to move forward.
I have a comment on the governor's, his commentary on TV. He had a haircut. I don't know if you all noticed it, but Steve Cicilloc had a haircut.
As well as what's going on with COVID-19 in the county, the county business still moves forward. We are conducting business as normal as possible for the community. We try to keep up with everything. Some of the things we are working on is our airports. I'm sure pretty sure that most of you have heard about the CARE Act that was passed recently, two or three days ago, I believe, in DC. What that does for Lander County is we have we will get we're entitled to $40,000, which will help in our operating funds, which would be the weather system.
The wind.
The wind, wind, wind system, and then I can't remember the AWAS. I'm sorry, the AWAS system. So that'll help with our costs on that at $40,000. More language in the CARES Act relates to our airport FAA grants, which essentially is going to take the match out of it. So they will be a 100% match from the FAA, which will be good. We have two projects, which by the way, will be are going to be open next Tuesday and Wednesday, one in Austin, one in Battle Mountain. And the potential there is that'll be 100% funded by the FAA. We do have a few things coming up. One of them is the NDOT meeting. It's most likely going to be canceled through NDOT, but they're still going to give out books. So I'll get the commissioners' books, the books that they send out. If you have any concerns, if you have any projects that you want DOT to look at, if you could get them to myself or directly to Lee Bonner, he can add that. And I can get you Lee Bonner's contact information if you like. But this is this would be our annual meeting of our NDOT projects.
Thank you. Keith, the question on that was whether we wanted to do a phone meeting or not after we got the books.
Right. And I was going to get to that, Commissioner, I'm sorry. But yes, if the consensus of the commission is that we do a phone meeting, or a Zoom, or a teleconference, something like that, we can do that with Mr. Bonner and his team, if that's if that's the direction that he would like to go. He's up for that, if that's what the commission wants. There's the rest is actually in on the agenda that I have. Thank you.
I have a question. Under the CARE Act, it does say that the counties are supposed to be getting something, of course, for what all we're doing. And the question that came up on the Executive Board yesterday was how many counties actually have it, because the state has received it. So if he's still holding it, and again, he's not communicating, the question is have the counties received it yet? So we need to check with the treasurer and make sure that.
So we have not received it. We have to apply for it. And I spoke with JUB David Meyer this morning to discuss the plan to put the application together to get that money to the county for, like I said, for the 40,000 for operational issue or operational needs, as well as the application process to get our FAA grants for our projects at Austin and Battle Mountain, 100% funded. Thank you.
I have a question going back to the with the masks and the protection. When I had spoken to a commissioner from Humboldt County, just trying to figure out what was going on over there, and they had mentioned that they had two Walmart employees that had tested positive. And one of the things that they wanted to make sure is because a lot of people from here go over there and shop, that we did know that as a community, and that it was put out there. So just to, you know, obviously, they've been quarantined, but they just wanted to, you know, she thought it was a good idea that we knew and that we put it out to the rest of the county. So everyone knows that that has that is, you know, something that has gone on over there. So just a little FYI.
It did put out a news release yesterday, and I believe it was forwarded to the commissioners. And it was it wasn't directed at anything other than the social distancing, the recommendation to wear masks, washing your hands. If you don't feel well, to stay home, don't come in if you have a fever or cough, things like that. And that's part of our of our opening plan, is if you don't feel well, stay home. If you have any of the symptoms, stay home and call the hospital or the clinic and have a discussion with them. The masks are important. We can we can highly recommend that masks are worn in public, but of course, we can't mandate. Anyway, thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment. For non-agid, excuse me, non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend to make a meeting on any, any non-agendized item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based on upon time, place, and manner, but but public comment based upon viewpoints may not be restricted. So are there at this time any public comments?
Do we release the phone lines for that? Is that what we do? So that they because otherwise, they're muted, right?
They're open. He hasn't.
Thank you.
So under that, I'm going to for public comment.
Muted.
You're muted.
I'm muted.
Are you muted? So can I move forward? All right. I'm going to just read for this the way we're doing these meetings, just a food for thought. I didn't know where else to kind of put this in there to make have people understand kind of the rules on this type of meeting. So it says for bridge notes, for those on bridge calls, please mute your phones unless you are speaking. Background noises such as paper rustling and conversation affect the ability for everyone to hear. Public comment notes, to go to the meeting attending attendees are on constant mute until public comment is called for. When public comment is called on, all go to, meeting attendees will be unmuted. Please be courteous and keep the background noise as low as possible to allow for the person speaking to be heard. Attendees that have disrupted background noise may be temporarily muted. During public comment, please identify yourself and wait to be called on before continuing. The chair will recognize you, and you may be you may then proceed with your comment. Public comments delivered either through the available email option or the go to-go meeting comment feature will be read by the staff at the appropriate times during the meeting. So, okay. All right. So we're going to go to the consent items. So it says, all matters listed under the consent items are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of Commissioners with one action. Without extensive discussion, any member of the board or citizen may request that an item be taken an item be taken out of the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. So going to go ahead. Under number one, approval of April 23rd, 2020, agenda notice. April approval of December 5th, 2019, meeting minutes. Approval of December 19th, 2019, meeting minutes. Approval of January 9th, 2020, meeting minutes. Approval of January 23rd, 2020, meeting minutes. Approval of February 27th, 2020, meeting minutes. Approval of March 12th, 2020, meeting minutes. Approval of March 16th, 2020, emergency meeting minutes. Number nine, approval of March 19th, 2020, special health board meeting minutes. Number 10, approval of April 9th, 2020, meeting minutes. Number 11, approval of payment of bills. Number 12, approval of payroll change requests. So we're going to go back out and poll. Number one, number two, number three, number four, number five, number six, number 10, and number 11. Okay.
On number one, that's the agenda notice. And it actually is an amended agenda, so we need to correct it accordingly and say, I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda notice for today, April 23rd, 2020.
This is Judy. I'll second that.
Oh, I think it was already seconded. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
Opposed to the agenda?
No, I think there's a delay. So we're going to go ahead and have you guys identify yourself out there so we know who's talking. So it's the motion's been made, it's been seconded. So all in favor. So Brian, will you identify yourself?
Brian votes aye.
Okay. Judy?
Judy votes aye.
Okay, all very good.
Kathy?
Yes.
I have noticed one thing, that sitting here with my phone on mute, when I do talk, you know, we're sitting here on speaker on my end, I don't know about Brian, but I've noticed I don't get as much feedback if I'm not on speaker. So Brian, I don't know if you're getting feedback when you talk either. But if you take it off speaker when you speak, you don't get as much feedback.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we're going to go ahead for the improvement of the payment of bills on number 11. We're out of that. We're going to poll two checks for point S, number 207387, 207481.
This is Pat. I make a motion, we approve check 207387 and 207481.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Judy votes aye.
And I abstain.
All right, very good.
I'll make a motion that we approve that we approve the balance of the bills.
Second.
Judy seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Judy votes aye.
All right, very good. We're going to go ahead and move on. So under commissioners, we have the update on the.
Well, just a minute.
Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed number 12. I'm sorry.
Kathy, I'll make a motion that we approve the balance, which would be number seven, approval of March 12 minutes, eight, March 16, nine, March 19. Those are the only minutes that did come in. And then number 12, the approval of the payroll change.
I want 12 to be by itself, please.
We didn't pull number 12.
Oh, I thought you just said you were going to include 12.
I did, but she didn't pull it from the ones from the one before. So I will pull 12.
Thank you.
Okay. So now where are we? Where are we at? We need a second?
Yes, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Brian votes aye.
All right. No opposed? All right, we're going to go on to number 12.
You wanted to discuss it?
No, I just wanted it to be a standalone item because I have something to say.
Okay.
So now we're on number 12, so.
I'm not I'm not going to vote on this because this is an improper thing to have in the agenda.
This is Judy. I'll make a motion to approve the payroll change request.
This is Pat. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Judy votes aye.
Opposed?
Brian votes aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I'm abstaining.
All right, very good. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to number one, update on the 2020 census.
Thank you. This is Pat. I did ask this to be on again. We keep getting little blips and emails from our regional person here who is in charge of the census for the state. And she wants us to keep it foremost in mind. Her name is Cheyenne Gibson. She's our regional coordinator that the governor appointed. And right now, we have a look up the amount. Let's see. We can actually check this almost every day of where we are on our percentage. And right now, Lander County has 29% that have responded already. That would probably be through our internet. And the state of Nevada is at 51%. So the whole point behind it is we still need to advertise. Perhaps when we have some time, we can put it at the civic center to remind everyone and maybe the the internet address that they can go on to do that. Excuse me. They actually aren't going to be sending out the forms till very shortly, I understand. And then they said, if you've got a post office box, you might not even get the form until June or July. That's all possible. But but their whole theory is it takes 10 minutes, there's 10 questions, and it gives us 10 years of funding for the state and our county. And that comes out to about $20,000 a person. So it's really important that we have an excellent response and get everybody counted for the census. So we want to just keep that foremost. She's also asking if there's anything that we're sending out, even on COVID things, if we could add at the bottom something about the census, please fill out your census form and then give the the internet address, some things like that. So I wanted to put it back on, so just to remind everybody. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to number two, under county manager, for discussion and possible action to approve or disapprove a revision of acreage application for Andrew and Tina Peak to combine three lots into one lot located at 115 and 117 Ofer Road and on 11 Cloghorn Road, Cloghorn Court, excuse me, in Kingston, APN 003-061-18003-061-19 and 003-061-20 zoned R1.
Kyla Sharp, planning coordinator for the record. This was noticed in the Bugle on February 5th, and it was approved conditionally because there was an inset on the map that was they felt was missing. Once talked to Bob Morley, that was not necessary on this map, because it's not a plat map. It's a reversion to acreage. They're just combining three, three lots. They're going to put a home and a shop on there.
So no issues?
No, there's no additions of of any septic or anything.
Septic's good.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion?
This is Pat. I'll make a motion that we uphold the planning commission's decision and approve the reversion of acreage application for Andrew and Tina Peak, combining three lots into one located at 115 and 117 Ofer Road and 11 Cloghorn Court in Kingston. The APN numbers are 00306118, 00306119, 00306120.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Judy votes aye.
Brian votes aye.
All right, very opposed. All right, move on. All right. For possible action to approve, disapprove, canceling of the May 14th and 28th, 2020 commissioner meetings and rescheduling them for May 7th and 21st, 2020. May 7th, 2020 will be the budget workshop. And May 21st, 2020 will be the regular commissioner meeting.
Thank you. So commissioners, I'm asking for these changes in order for us to to conduct our budget workshop on May 7th. As everybody's well aware, we had we did put it off. So we're at a point now where we need to to get that in place. I had a discussion with the fiscal officer. And the reason for the move is to allow more time for the corrections that we're pretty sure are coming, or the changes, I should say, not corrections, but the changes that are coming. So I've asked, as it says in the agenda item, for the 14th and the 28th to be canceled, and will we reschedule for the 7th and the 21st, putting our May 7th meeting as our budget workshop in order to get that process done. Then this gives the fiscal officer time to make those changes in the budget, and then we'll bring it back on May the 21st for the commissioners to sign. This is the one that you have to sign in order for us to submit to the Department of Taxation. And if there's any changes at that meeting, it will give the fiscal officer the opportunity, the time to make those changes prior to the NRS requirement of the June 1 submission to the Department of Taxation.
What are the anticipated changes?
Well, I'm sure there's going to be some changes or some possible changes to some of the budgets. I've heard some grumblings that there's questions on some of the requested items that the commission needs to discuss or wants to discuss.
In county, or you're talking about changes from the state?
No, within the county, within our county budgets, our county operating budgets, personnel budgets, and so forth.
Okay.
So and it may be a challenge to have our budget workshop on the phone. So I would like, I guess it's appropriate to talk about it now. We're talking about changing dates and the budget workshop. What's what's the commission's feelings? Are we going to try to do this in person and have the distancing of the commissioners? And we'll have individuals come in one at a time, or we want to try to do this on the phone?
I think it would.
This is Judy. And I think that that's a possibility, that the room be basically just the commissioners and necessary people and each individual department. As their time comes up, then we can bring them in and discuss it. But I do think it needs to be in person.
Yeah, I would.
And we can still have, we could still have a teleconference for the public if they'd like to listen.
It's after May 1st. I say, open it up. Let's do it.
Okay. So and that's the thing, there has been no additional directive from the governor, but then there's also talk of counties opening up on their own. So.
We can have the chairs put six feet space them out, people can come in. I mean, I'm not afraid of getting it. I think I already had.
And then we could have the commissioners spread out at the top. And then we could have the commissioners spread out at the top.
I think that's a great idea, I just wasn't sure if, if we would, if the governor, you know, opens things up yet. So if, if possible, that's the best route to do, to go, to open it.
And, and we can still have the go-to for the public, and then the individual requesters can come forth individually, um.
We can pull them in.
We, we can pull them in, and, I don't know, we can do social distancing if it's still in place i- in our foyer, or in the parking lot, maybe it'll be a nice day, we could put tables, separate them, something like that.
So, I'll make a motion to.
Uh, before, before you make the motion, may I, may I add something? I have a real concern if we're doing just the budget, and of course, the budget usually takes us a day and a half, two days, so we know we're really gonna be cramping to do it in one day. So my concern is, our regular agenda items may not be on there, and can't be because of the timeframe, and that means that we won't have another meeting for a month, today's the twenty-third, and we won't have another meeting until the twenty-first.
Okay.
So, so my concern is, maybe we should think about the fourteenth, do the budget workshop, try and do that in person, and then do the fourteenth by phone, because we can handle regular county business on that, and it might not be real long, but at least it wouldn't be put on the earlier one, because we can't really take the time to do, you know, reports and, and other discussions.
Right, so the twenty-first, once, once you approve the budget, or once you, we do the budget on the seventh, the twenty-first is more of a, of a signing process, a- as you know, that, the budget goes to you, it's, it's been done on the seventh, it goes to the commissioners, all you guys are gonna do is, is sign it. But, but we can, we, and then do other county business, as, as.
Right, and I'm okay with the twenty-first, but what I'm saying is, between now and the twenty-first, we won't have a meeting, and the county business goes on.
Right.
Passy, can, can, the way this is written, can we make a motion for May seventh?
No.
We can't?
No.
Yeah, it says, we're, we're going to approve or disapprove, canceling the May fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Right.
And so I don't wanna cancel the fourteenth, so that's perfectly legitimate on our agenda.
That's correct, Kathy.
So if we leave the fourteenth, and then we reschedule the seventh and the twenty-first, that means we will do the fourteenth and the twenty-first as our regular two meetings.
That is correct.
Yes.
As we have done it in the past, it's taken two days, why can't we just have a motion that says May seventh and May eighth if needed? Because you have emergency powers, if a meeting goes too long, you can always carry it over to the next day.
Yes.
So why not just make a motion for May seventh and eighth if needed? And then that eliminates the fourteenth, we'll be done.
Art, this is Liz, what Passy's saying is, she wants a regular meeting before the twenty-first, so the seventh is just your budget meeting, it's not a regular.
Yeah, okay, well, let's go seventh and eighth if needed, and then still have the meeting on the fourteenth and twenty-first. Yeah.
Ted, can they add the eighth in there? Ted?
This is Ted, this is Ted, um.
With the way it's.
Technically, no, technically, no.
We can extend the meeting at the time, though, I believe.
Can they extend the meeting on the?
Yes, you can do that, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
So we, we can, we can make the meeting for the seventh and put it in the eighth, and add the eighth if, if it meets the, if there's any spillover.
So can I make a motion, then?
No, can you hold on one second, um, as far as the eighth doing regular business, wouldn't you have to ha, agendize all of that?
It'd just be.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll just be a continuation of the budget workshop if we need to, and then, and then.
Right.
And then if, as.
We cannot do a regular meeting on the eighth.
Right, and then we'll have a regular on the fourteenth.
So the only thing we're changing, we're adding the seventh, and we are deleting the twenty-eight, right?
Yes.
And we're moving it to the fourteen, we're leaving the fourteenth, and we're moving the twenty-eight to the twenty-first, because we have to, because of the budget timelines.
Yes.
Got it?
So are we ready for a mo- motion?
Go ahead, Judy.
So I'll make a motion that we cancel the regular scheduled meeting of May twenty-eighth, and we schedule budget meeting, budget workshop meeting for May seventh, and add an additional meeting on May twenty eighth, twenty first.
I'll second the motion, this is Pat.
Uh, all in favor?
Art says aye.
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 Brian says aye.
Moving on, all right, we're gonna go ahead and recess the board of Lander County Commissioners and convene the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board, um, composed of the Lander County Board of Commissioners and the Lander County Sheriff's Office. All right, so for number four, um, for possible action regarding the Lander County liquor license for the, um, um, Mountain View Clubhouse, the one, I do have a comment in this, as far as the agenda goes, that I felt that the agenda should have had the name of the people who were applying for the license in it.
Is it in the backup? It has to be in the backup.
But on the agenda, I just thought that, um, is that something that has been done in the past, where the names have been on there of the people, or do you strictly go by the backup?
This is Judy, yes, we've always had the name of the, um, persons or businesses, um, applying for the liquor license on the agenda, and I do not believe that we can actually approve this as agendized, because it's big.
Ted, what's your opinion?
I don't have the backup in front of me, so who, who requested it?
I don't think it really matters who requests it, it's just not on the agenda.
If it was requested by the Lander, if it was requested by Mountain View Clubhouse, and I don't think that's accurate, then it would be okay, but if requested by a different party than just the, uh, clubhouse, then no, then you're right.
Okay.
And it wasn't by the clubhouse, it was by, uh, individuals for a particular business.
Okay, then you, you would be right, that's why I asked the question.
Right, no, I, I get it.
Okay, so we're gonna have to table that and have it brought back on.
So if you'll refer, if you'll refer to your agenda request, we don't, I don't change the way it's worded on an agenda, and that's the way it was requested, liquor license approval for Mountain View Clubhouse. If you would like more specificity on it, I will take that direction, but, um, that's the way it's worded on the agenda request.
But if we don't have the correct name on it, because it's stating that it's, uh, the, uh, Mountain View Golf Course is requesting it when they're not, it actually is for a per, a business.
Yeah, I, I believe, is Kelly on the line, or is it for Kelly?
Yeah.
Well, she already has a liquor license for her other businesses, then, if we were just doing a proper name, but, um, she can't use that for the, for the golf course.
No.
So, doesn't it go through the golf course, Ron?
Yes, it'd have to be for the golf course.
This is Brian, there's, in the backup, there's three individuals, it looks to me like, that are applying for it.
Well, their nicknames, their nicknames, the three, that's just for identification process, right? The Rowan.
Michelle Rowan.
Rowan is asking for.
Kelly Sonderman, and Mike Sonderman.
So yes, that would be the mother-in-law, um, then Kelly, and then her husband.
So Ted, you're saying that we can't approve this, because we don't have a name in the agenda?
I believe that, this is Ted, I believe that the liquor license itself has to have a name on it.
Yes.
And since it's not agendized with the name, we can't give a liquor license to the Mountain View Golf.
Right, okay.
Because they're not a legal entity.
Bring it back quick.
All right, so.
So I, I would like to make comment, and I'm not trying to be nasty, but, um, Keith, you have changed verbiage on an agenda, and if, if an agenda comes in, and you know what people are asking for, um, you could counsel them on how to, to make the agenda request properly, because people don't know. They don't know it has to be set on the agenda, so if it, if it comes into you, and you see that it's not worded properly, get ahold of them, and either request to make the changes for them, or have them come in and make the changes themselves.
I'd like an example of when I changed an agenda request, this is Keith.
I'm not sure if it was you specifically, or if it came from legal, but Kathy Ancho had something on the agenda, and I saw that agenda request that she had written out, and that was not what was put on the agenda.
Okay, well, you specifically, you specifically pointed at me.
But that's another matter, so it does not go with this agenda item. I'm just making the recommendation that you assist the public on their agenda requests.
Very good, I will, thank you.
All right, we're gonna go ahead, then, um, and table this and ask, ask that it be brought back with the corrections, please. All right, so we're going to adjourn from the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board, and, uh, reconvene the meeting of the Lander County Board of County Commissioners, so moving on to number five, for possible action to approve, disapprove the FY, um, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one contract between the Board of Trustees and the Elko County Library, and the Lander County Board of, um, Commissioners for Library Services, and authorize the, uh, chair to sign, so is there any discussion?
This is just our annual operating contract, uh, agreement, contract between, um, with us and Elko County to run our, uh, library, and it does show the, uh, the changes in the front letter there, uh, the cover letter, very minimal changes, but there are some, uh, addition, some increases.
Yeah, I, there's one particular item on there that had clarification, clarification on it, other post-employment benefits, Battle Mountain twelve thousand, what is that exactly?
Is that in the cover letter, Brian?
No, it's on the actual itemized, um, Lander County Budget twenty twenty-one, where it goes over salaries and things.
Oh, oh, okay, all right, um, oh, right there, okay. Uh, you know what, I will have to double-check into that.
I, I couldn't hear the question, Keith, what was it?
What is, uh, other post-employment benefits? I think that's something new.
Yeah, right, it'd be, basically what that is, is somebody who's no longer employed there, right? That's receiving benefits, is that, am I reading that correctly?
That's, that's the way I would look at it, but I will get, certainly get, um, clarification, and I'll bring it back to the next agenda.
All right, so we're gonna table that item, moving on, for possible action regarding, providing, hazard pay beginning March twenty, twenty twenty, in the amount of additional five percent of base wage for all hours worked to.
I can't hear you, Kathy?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you guys, I did not have my mic on, I'm gonna start over, sorry about that. For possible action regarding, providing hazard, hazard pay beginning March twenty, twenty twenty, in the amount of the additional five percent, um, of base wage for all hours worked to all sheriff's office employees during the state of emergency, so. Sheriff Hunger?
Sheriff Ron Unger, and, uh, we put this, brought this to the board, uh, we feel that the, uh, the sheriff's office, their essential workers are on the front lines carrying us through this crisis every day, twenty-four seven, um, crisis is not over, uh, and I don't think it will be over for a while, and our employees, uh, continue to work and expose themselves to the virus, uh, we feel should be compensated. Uh, our employees are, are, uh, more highly, uh, at risk due to the, due to their exposures, and we'd like them to be compensated there, uh, they're putting their lives on the line every day, twenty-four seven, uh, they're getting more exposures, they're sacrificing themselves in order to keep our community healthy, safe, and on course, so we'd like to compensate them.
Sheriff Hunger?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Pat, and, and I think this is a very difficult one for all of us, because our sheriff's department is so appreciated by not only this, this commission and our staff, but most certainly by every citizen, um, you guys are great, there is no question, the men and women that work for your department are fabulous, but I have a real concern, I, I know when they're hired, it's to serve and protect, and I understand what you're saying as far as an emergency, but I do think setting a precedent such as this is a very difficult one for me, because then I think, what about my firefighters that run into a burning building, I mean, um, that, that's tough, what about all the, the EMS workers, what about the hospital workers, what about the people on the, at the grocery stores? I mean, we're all in so many of those things, and I just, I, I checked with a couple of the counties, and, and, um, the ones I checked with said, no, um, they're not doing anything, they're just, um, you know, keeping it the way it is, but I do wanna put in the record that as long as I have been a commissioner, I don't remember one thing that the sheriff's office has put in on this budget that we do, that we haven't said, all right, go for it, I mean, we are there, because, because you're there, and so, and, and even the extra that we did last year, where we said, you know what, let's cover everybody's, um, family on the health insurance, that was our push, that was extra, extra, because we just thought everybody was really in the deserving mode, but, um, to do this, I think is just, oh, opening up an area that I just really don't wanna see us go to, but please understand, it's not because we don't appreciate every minute they're on the line.
No, and I understand that, and, uh, for what you said about the sheriff's office, we do appreciate what the county's done for us, don't get me wrong there, we honestly appreciate everything, you've been very great to us, but in this particular instance, we are in a state of emergency through the state of Nevada, um, a lot of the workers had the options to stay at home and, and get full pay for it while they're doing this, they had the options, we didn't have an option. We have to be out there, and we are exposing ourselves more than anybody else in this county, and my officers, they have young families, and I just think that, uh, they're out there, and we oughta compensate it for it. What would we do if they said, okay, we're not coming to work? We are essential, and so is the firefighters, they're volunteers, I understand that, I understand the rest of it, but I'm doing this for my department, is what I'm doing.
This is.
If the other ones wanted it, then they can approach us, this is for the sheriff's office personnel. This, this is Art, um, I want you to get every penny that we can get you, Ron. I know that we're looking into a program that's being talked about, that's thirteen dollars an hour on top of the people's hourly wage, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, it's being held up right now because the House of Representatives is not in session, but that's on the forefront, and we're tracking that. I don't have, I, I understand the five percent, but I would wanna give it to everybody that worked.
Well.
Every single person.
That's, that would be your call, I'm just asking for the, the sheriff's office, and I can tell you, uh, I'm not the only one asking for this, it's being done all over the United States, uh, right now, New York put in for fifty percent, not five, fifty percent, and that was for the EMS and all, they combined it, but here, I, I kinda thought we got together and talked about it, and we know what's gonna come down the line, but I'm asking from the sheriff's department's personnel.
Yeah, I think there's a problem, if we give it to one agency, and we don't give it to the other, I think that's, that's the sticky wicket right there, I mean, I, hey, what you guys need, you guys get, it's that simple, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, and I understand the other side.
The rollout is, you know, I'm gonna defer to, to Ted on, on this.
Well, I understand it, uh, you know, I know that the EMS people, we're right there to back them up, the fire department's here to back us up, and them if needed, I absolutely understand the EMS side, and.
Oh, this is Brian, um, again, I, I, I kinda mirror what Kathy was saying, I, I do appreciate you guys and everything that you do.
No, and I don't disagree with you, Brian, I absolutely agree with that, but we're in a state of emergency and it was just something I wanted to see if we could get by for my part.
This is Kathy, one of the differences, yes, law enforcement knows what the risks are when they hire on, but the one big difference on this is with the law enforcement too, I think that needs to be looked at is the fact that they're taking this home to their families. I mean, when you run into a burning building, when you come home, you wash the soot off and you go home. But I think that with this, the chance of taking it home to their families and their loved ones is a risk. And I'm not, you know, what, what other departments want to do as far as bringing it forward is entirely up to them. But as far as the sheriff's office goes, I think that they are at risk and they are the ones that have had to stay. There's no one that gets to stay home and work from home there. And every department is, made, does make contact, you know, whether it be the dispatcher, whether it be the front office, whether it be the patrol, obviously, the detentions. And this is different, this isn't, you know, for pity's sake, this outbreak is, can, you can give it to your animals for, you know, God's sake. So I just think that it's a little bit different and that we've not ever come across a beast like this. And I think that when they take on, when we all take on these jobs and we're in the public, this is something we're not thinking of, so that's my two cents.
Well, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to point out too, you know, we're, we're spending taxpayers' dollars. What about all the taxpayers that work for the essential businesses? You know, the grocery stores, the hospitals, the, what about them? Because when it all boils down to, we're talking about taxpayers' dollars.
And according to what I found out, Brian, that $13 an hour program is for the people that continue to work, the cashiers and the clerks and so on. That's why I want to follow that, because even the employees at, at your business and, and other business would be open for that $13 an hour. I think that's something we need to really follow. But I don't have a problem. The only thing I would do is I would encourage the, the, the people that belong to associations to include some kind of pandemic epidemic kind of language in their, in their contracts for the future so that this isn't an issue and doesn't have to be brought to the commissioners.
And I have a quick question. So with the, with the packages from the government, when they're saying they're going to pay the businesses that have stayed open and paid their employees or are paying their employees like the county is paying their employees and they're rolling in. Now, is that something that the county can apply for as well? Because, so I mean, we can get, is that something within that if, if that was approved, is that 5% something that we can also get back on top of? So it's not costing the taxpayers, does that make sense? Is that not, that we're getting back, does that make sense? I'm just asking.
If we got the $13 an hour, would we, would we deduct the 5% increase from it? Is that what you're thinking?
No, what I'm, what I'm thinking is, the money that we are gonna, that we've paid out to everyone, that we're going to recoup because we kept people employed, is when we're giving our final numbers, is that something the 5% could be added into? Is that, Keith?
Okay, so once this, first it has to be approved, it's called the HERO Act, by the way. We, we have to apply for it and I, I, there's nothing specific on it because it still hasn't made it through the House yet. I don't know if it's a, if we can be reimbursed, I don't know if we get a lump sum check. I, I don't know how it works. Something that has, is a plague, or is a, it's, it's a plague to this county is, is our financial, where, where we're at financially in this county, it hurts us. You know, there's no, it's no secret, Lander County has a very substantial financial portfolio and it hurts us, it hurts, it's hurt, it's, it's hurt us in grants that we've been encouraged to apply for and been denied because we quote, "have too much money." Okay, so there, there's, there's those issues there. Our size hurts us, there's, there's, part of this CARE Act, we don't, we won't even, we can't even apply because we're too small to apply for it.
Oh, because they don't have 500 employees?
No, it, it has to do with population size. Our population isn't big enough, so we can't, there's, there's, I, I believe Clark and maybe even Washoe's too small. But Clark would be able to, in, in some of these acts or some of these bills that are going through. So to answer your question, I didn't mean to get off track there, but to answer your question, until it's passed and everything's put out, we, we really don't know what we would be eligible for, how, if it's a reimbursement process, if we can, if it's a pay forward, we don't know.
The bottom line is, we're never gonna make up everything that we're losing, that's just the way it is. And the tough part is, is because the counties are going to be hurting because of the CTX, consolidated tax, sales tax, all that type of thing that we use for our regular budget. And like our executive director said, yes, we do have things that we've, we've put away in net proceeds, but we have to do our budget and, and our regular, our, our regular ins and outs on other sources. We don't ever want to go to net proceeds and have to run our county on that. So when we look at, at increases of what we're doing, we're going, we're in a situation that we're not gonna have the income, we know that. We know it's gonna be less than what it was because of, of all the businesses that are closed and that's just part of it. So we, we have to really be mindful of how much we're putting out there and what we're still gonna have to pay.
So...
This is Judy and I, I have a couple of questions. Is, I agree with Art that we really need to be watching what happens with, with the House and the HERO Act. I would think that maybe we can, can do something retroactive if that does pass and, and follow through, that we can come back retroactively and go back to March 20th for those employees. My other question, and this might be for Ted, I don't totally understand the Stafford Act, but I know one of the reasons to declare a state of emergency is to get federal funding and help. Would, would wages, there be a possibility of, of applying for hardship on wages through that act?
This is Ted, are you asking me, Judy?
Yes.
Well, it, it, we, as Keith pointed out, we don't know exactly what we're able to apply for yet. However, on, on this agenda, specific agenda request, this is a policy consideration, you guys have to decide whether you want to give it. If you decide to give it, the legal perspective is that you, I caution you on giving it to just one agency when there are other essential offices dealing with the public who are working at the same time.
Oh, no, I understand that and, and I guess just my question is, even if they, even if the House doesn't pass these bills for assistance, do you know of any other, you know, like I said, like under the Stafford Act, if that allows for the county to recoup any, any wages for assistance?
I don't know, at this time, Judy, I don't know yet.
Okay.
I've, I've been trying to, I've been trying to keep up with this, but, but these things seem to be very elusive. The, the nuts and bolts of these programs are very elusive.
And I just want to add, thank you Ted, I just want to add that I pretty much agree with everything everybody else has said. It's some very valid points, they were questions that I had, that I do feel that, you know, there are people in this community that are working above and beyond and very deserving, although I think everybody is. But I just am hesitant for our county's budget and, and also setting the precedence.
Well, I just, Ron Unger, you okay? The only thing I have to say is, I know there are other essential offices and elected officials here that have to stay open, but I want to point out, we are the only office that's in the public 24/7. These doors are locked up here.
I'm gonna make a motion, I don't know if it's gonna pass, but anyway, make a motion to approve the hazard pay beginning March 20th, 2020 in the amount of an additional 5% of the base wage for all hours worked to the sheriff's office employees during the state of emergency. The reason I'm doing this is because Ron has a good point, he came forward, other people can come forward and the other agencies. Right now, I see the exhaustion on the faces of the patrolmen and going above and beyond, way above and beyond. And I want to get as much money to our employees as we can because the future, as far as I'm concerned, is looking pretty grim. We're gonna get big net proceeds of, of mon, of mine's money and they're gonna come after it. So I want to take care of our employees as best I can.
I'll go ahead and second that with a, a little add-on to that, that during, when you do your, like Art had mentioned, when you do your contracts, that that'd be something that you guys, and the whole county actually, look at changing something when pandemics are in there. So then it's across the board, you know, maybe not 5%, but some, something is added in there for that. So I'll go ahead and second Art's motion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Judy votes nay.
Uh, this is with a very sad heart, but I'm voting no.
Brian?
Yeah, Brian votes nay, but I'd like to add that I think we need to follow this HERO Act very closely and if there's any way we can compensate all of our essential county employees with that, we need to be all over it.
Brian, this is Keith, so I, I've been following it, everything's kind of stalled right now. But as more information becomes available, I think I sent you the link, but I will send that, the entire link to all the commissioners and any, any updated information that comes forth.
I, I want to add one thing for the record, Ron would not get this 5%, only his employees. So I want that in the record.
So, motion did not guide.
Well, thank you very much for your consideration and to let everybody know, we will still be doing our due diligence and our job. So thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you guys do.
You're all fabulous, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead on correspondence reports, future agenda items.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna bring back the, I'll bring back the Elko County contract. I will, Robert, will you or Ron put in a, a new request? So I'll bring back the liquor license for next time.
Could you just ask us to bring back it? Another request for the liquor license? Robert, will you or Ron put in a, a new request? So I'll bring back the liquor license for next time. A question, or Keith, did you just ask us to bring back it? Another request for the liquor license?
Okay, Robert?
Could we also look into the fire restrictions if we'd like to take that on?
Yes, I, I sent that to you, Ron, the fire restrictions in the forest and asked for your thoughts on that.
Okay, I'll, I'll review that.
Yeah, if, if you would, like the fire department is wanting to do that, we'll go ahead and address it, okay?
I know a lot of the, a lot of the agencies have, have done fire restrictions early specifically because of the situation we're in and we don't want any more of our volunteers and fire department out there if we can do some protection ahead of time.
Keith, I'd like to have an agenda item. The cost of a 5% emergency pandemic increase for, I guess, the 20th until, March 20th until May 1st or whenever we completely open up. I mean, I'm ready to open up, but for the whole people, for all the people 5% that, that were working and figuring out a cost and go from there and that would include the sheriff's office and that again.
Our, our, our state is going to be long, long coming. It's not gonna be made first the way our governor is communicating, so it would be way beyond.
Let me ask, I have a question for Ted. If we elected as a Board of County Commissioners to reopen our county for business and despite what Governor Sizlak recommendation is, I mean, is that something we could do?
You can't violate the terms of the directive and go by the directive until the end of the month. So if you were to open, if you were to declare that you could open up the county prior to that, the state can do certain things, yes.
Okay, well, my, my only question is, is that, like he, like Elko County, they left it to their businesses whether they wanted to be open or not, despite what Sizlak said, you know, all non-essential businesses need to close. So I figured if Elko County did that, you know, that's what I'm, that's my way of thinking, so.
Well, Lander County could do it too, but, but I don't think Elko County's contemplating doing it until the end of the month. It's, it's my understanding that they think about the 1st of, of May and it's their only ballgame there because we don't have any written directives that cover us in the May.
That was gonna be my, this is Kathy, that was gonna be my next question on this. If he just leaves it open-ended, does that make it easier for the counties to go forward with how they feel? Is that, I mean, without?
Yes, if he does not extend the directive, the counties, in my opinion, the counties can do what they wish after May 1st.
Ted, this is Judy and I have a question for Ted. Ted, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I've kind of been reading through the NRS Chapter 414 on Emergency Management and 414060 does basically spell out the duties of the, the governor and then 414070, you know, additional powers. One of the questions I have regarding that, and I'm sure that it's been looked at, but I'm curious, as far as the duties and power of the governor, I didn't find anything that said that he could close businesses. So I was just wondering if you could maybe give me some direction on that because it, it does spell out certain things that, that the, the governor can do, but I haven't seen anything to where he can actually shut down a business.
Judy, there's a federal directive that's out, actually, it's 19 pages long that identifies the essential and non-essential businesses and I think that's what he's gone by. If you would like a copy of that, I'd be happy to email it to you.
Well, and I appreciate that, Patsy, but, but, but that federal guideline was, was a suggestion, it wasn't an order. And, and so it's, it's a suggestion and, and our governor has taken it as an order. And, and I'm just curious if he actually has the, the power to order.
That was an order, Judy, this is Kathy, that was indeed an order and not a suggestion. So, alrighty.
All right, well, thank you.
Very good.
It, it was an order and this issue that you brought up is going to be litigated all over the United States, I guarantee it.
Well, and, and one other comment I want to make on that is, if I understand it right, that our legislature does have, have the power to, through, through a, um, resolution to cancel the state of emergency. And I didn't know what the ramifications would, of that would be for the state and I don't even know if the legislature would do something like that, opposing the government and stepping, stepping on its toes, so to speak, but, you know, that's, that's also, you know, a thought of talking to our legislators to see if they can maybe work and push the governor to allow businesses to open up, because they do have the authority to, to make that determination themselves.
Judy, do you want this as an agenda item, is that what you're getting to? Because that's what we're on.
No, I just, I just had some questions because we were kind of on that subject a little bit.
I have one quick thing. I have one quick thing, um, and we'll move on. Um, uh, maybe next time, Keith, for a report on where, and, um, the seeding and the, um, poison for the Mormon crickets, uh, just to find out, uh, we can get an update exactly, because, once again, I was out in the hills tromping around yesterday, and they're horrible, and then between Valmy and here on the side of the road, they're such, and I know that, uh, going to Austin, they have this all the time, but there was a, a semi in front of us, and the road was covered, and you could see his rear end, just i- in the slick of it. And, uh, just the curiosity of kinda where they're at, 'cause that's, whether it be Interstate eighty or going to, you know, Austin on the highway when they cause these slicks on the road, if we can get a kind of an update where we are for the, you know, the poisoning and all of that.
Okay, so when we get to public comment, because we're just on correspondence, I will, I will give you a brief update.
Okay.
I, and I meant to do that in my opening update, but I got sidetracked a little bit.
Keith, I'd like, I'd like a report from whomever, uh, Finance or Treasury on how we're doing with our investments.
So I can do that too. I, I apologize, um, Commissioner, I, I have that, uh, from last time. And I could do that when we get to public comment, okay?
Are you ready to move on to public comment? All right. So, for non-agendaized items only, persons are invited to, um, to submit comments in writing and/or attend to, make comments on any non-agendaized items at the board meeting, if any. The discussion, um, of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on the public comment based on time, place, and matter, but not, um, that public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Are you ready for me to go to public comment, Robert? All right, so do we have any public comment? So, do we have anything for, do we have any public comment? All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on.
Muted. I'm muted.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, uh, I apologize, I, I did mean to bring those two items up. Uh, the Mormon crickets, I have received several calls and text messages related to the Mormon crickets within the county. Um, myself and Bert got together with Jeff Knight. They had a ag guy out, uh, earlier this week. He was out inspecting the areas. It appears like, uh, what they're going to do is aerial spraying to start with. We have two pallets of this poison for the crickets, one in the north and one in the south, that we purchased over the winter in anticipation of this. But according to the Department of Ag, that, um, the poison does not kill the babies, the, the little ones. So they are discussing some aerial spraying. As the aerial spraying gets closer, and if that's the direction that the ag department does go, uh, I'll certainly let, I'll get it out in an email to you. Um, we did talk about poisoning. There is a comment period going on right now regarding poisoning of the crickets, and we really, we aren't even allowed to do anything until that comment period is over, which I believe is this Friday, um, or next Thursday. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. It's either tomorrow or a week from today. So that's the cricket issue. Our investments, Commissioner, I, I spoke with, um, uh, Judy, the treasurer. Our, can, our investments are holding their own. I have a brief one-page printout that I will email or hand out to you if you'd like to see. Our investments are doing, uh, fine right now. We're not, we're not losing, but we're not really gaining, so we're status quo. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I did have a discussion with the assessor, um, and I'm sure everybody knows, our, um, fourth quarter tax revenue is gonna be in the tank. So, it's gonna, our fourth quarter tax revenues are gonna be in the tank. So, this is something that, that this commission, I would ask, recommend that during budgets, we truly look hard at all, um, all the projects coming forth. I have, I have put a indefinite hold on the sports complex, as well as the new Civic Center. Um, those, those are on hold until we decide what we're gonna do. Um, I've had a discussion with, uh, Bert Public Works about projects. Um, I, I truly think between our projects, our grant requests, um, and the things that we, that are non-essential, I, I would ask, recommend, highly recommend that commissioners, we look at that, uh, or you look at that, I'm sorry, that you guys look at that during the budget workshop. Thank you.
This is Judy, can I make a public comment?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Um, and, and this is in regards to the crickets, um, that I think that possibly once, once we do get some answers back, that, um, something be put into the, in the paper for the public to make them aware of what is going on. So, because the public are the ones that are screaming the loudest, um, well, not necessarily. But anyway, I think letting them know, you know, aside the fa, aside from the fact of during the commissioners' meeting that we do actually put, put a notice in the paper to let them know we're doing something or we're trying to do something about it.
Is that something that we can go ahead and do, Keith, is go ahead and put it in the, um, paper?
Yes, so once we get some, some solid answers from ag, we, I'll certainly get it into the paper. I don't know if the commission is aware, but, uh, the Battle Mountain Bugle has taken away our reporter. So we have to deal directly with, um, the Bugle office in Winnebago, which is not a problem. Um, it's just, we, we have to be in more contact with them for these types of things, which we're hap, I'm happy to do.
Can we also just put out like we do with the agenda, public notices? Hang them where we normally would put agendas, so people, you know, that are, are, you know, even at the grocery stores, you know, put them in the windows so people know what, that we're trying to do something?
Yes, yeah, we, we can do that. And, and we've put some public notices out, um, for instance, at the golf course, and it lasts about thirty seconds, and then it's, uh, the wind blows it away. We'll just say the wind blows it away. But, um, uh, anyway, but we, we, yes, we can do that.
I have a question about the spraying. Um, because I do know that when, um, Robin sprays for the mosquitoes, that he contacts certain people and, and does, post notices of certain areas that are gonna be spraying. Um, does this spray for the crickets affect the bees?
Oh, the bees? I, I, I didn't quite hear that, I'm sorry. I, I don't know, we can, uh, that's something we can talk to the ag about. I know, uh, when, uh, Robin sprays, she, uh, does put something out, uh, for the bees. But, and I'll check with ag.
Thank you.
From what I've read, uh, upon, and it hasn't been a lot, that, that, um, it doesn't affect the bees. Um, 'cause that, you'd have people screaming to high heavens if it did. So, um, like I said, it's not like I've done a ton of research, but I have done a little bit of research and, um, 'cause I'm a bee lover. They, um, it does not affect, um, the, what the, the, uh, Mormon crickets affect the bees more than the spraying does, 'cause they eat their, the bees, everything that the bees would try to cross pollen, so. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, guys. Thank you to the public.
Thank you, Kathy.
This conference is no longer being recorded.